Hey, good evening and welcome to the July regular meeting of the Planning Commission. We will open with an amendment to the agenda or a request to amend the agenda, Mr. Soliates.
Thank you. I'd like to add an amendment to the agenda to add a discussion of zoning text initiation on childcare to the end of the meeting.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Move it properly, second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, any objections? I will add that to the end of the meeting if that's all right, Mr. Soliates. Okay. Let's begin with Commissioner Reports. Mr. Parker, Bill, anything from UVA?
Um, I don't have a whole lot since the last time we talked. One thing that came up is there was scheduled to be a a master planning council meeting over at UVA in July. We've decided that we should probably postpone that till September, so I don't have a date for the new one, but that'll be coming.
Thanks for the heads up because I was planning to be there.
Yeah, so consider this your friendly reminder. Yeah, but that's about all I have for today. Thanks.
Ms. Green.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again. I have not had any commission or meetings since our last meeting in June. I know my time is short here and I would like to just announce and tell you all that I have been appointed to the Charlottesville redevelopment housing authority for the next three years. My term started July 1st, so it should not overlap, but I am very excited to start the next chapter of public service in my life. So it's good to see you.
We've got one more meeting with you, don't we?
Yes, as far as I know, unless something else happens, and I have said that, you know, I would hang on a couple more meetings if need be till someone else is appointed.
Reverend Eaton, no, Rory, Mr. Stoneberg.
Almost skipped me again. Yeah, I've missed you all. It's good to see you guys all again. And congratulations to Commissioner Green and her appointment. Been a busy, interesting month, but nothing planning related. We do have an MPO tech meeting next Tuesday, so I guess I'll tell you guys about that next month.
Great. Now Reverend Eaton.
Yeah, I've had a very, very busy couple of months, but I have no reports on Planning Commission activities. I'm very interested in our agenda changes this evening, so look forward to good discussion on that.
And I think Ms. Dow has not joined. Mr. Soliates.
It's been busy. Housing Advisory Committee met twice, both to discuss emergency housing measures, of which there are many. All of the CAF funding has been redirected to emergency relief. It's all gone, two years gone. So no more new housing projects, things like the crossing, two years gone. Distressing, but it's nowhere near enough. The money is running out. There is new, some new relief money coming, some of which we'll be discussing tonight. But the situation is dire and drastic and getting worse. The there has been some heroic effort to keep very high-risk homeless people in our community in very expensive motels. But that money is running out. There's a desire and some money to replace that with a permanent situation, but no timeline on that and money is going to be hard. And every, you know, programming, there's a massive eviction crisis coming. There's no money for that. It's very bad. Sorry.
Mr. Lindra.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. I did attend a Board of Architectural Review virtual meeting in June, June 16th. It was our first one since last February. Oh, we did nominate and did appoint Carl Schwartz as our new chair and Brett Gastinger as our vice chair. We had four certificate of appropriate applications. All four were approved. And then lastly, the board will write with staff a letter to the Department of Historic Resources in support of Burley High School being nominated to the Virginia National Registers of Historic Places. Thank you.
I don't think that I've got anything to report. The one thing is that I have appointed myself to be our representative to the CIP board, so I'll be there taking over for our leases, since Lisa's going on to the Housing Authority. Ms. Chris.
Good luck with that.
Thanks.
Can I ask Lyle one quick question?
Sure.
Lyle, when it, as it relates to the rent relief and evictions, wasn't that addressed today by the governor?
Oh, that's news to me. Maybe I missed it.
Maybe I misheard something. I had, you know, several people walking in and out, but I thought that that was something that was a conversation today, so. I think they're trying to work on some of that with the state potentially. Maybe I misheard it, but I didn't know if you knew anything.
All right, Ms. Chrissy.
All right, so Mr. Soliates has been reappointed to the Planning Commission, so he will be with us through 2024. I found that out today. He may already know that formally, or maybe not. Doesn't sound like he does, but he formally is now. And they, they're still recruiting for Lisa's spot. Applications are due by July 25th, and then council will be reviewing and holding interviews. I'm hopeful that they will have someone in place in early August, but not sure how that's going to go. We're going to hope for the best there so that we have our full group. But if not, Ms. Green has tentatively put the September meeting on her schedule and will be available to help us out if we need to. So we'll kind of go from there and see how it rolls. We have a robust meeting for August coming up. We don't necessarily have a public hearing item scheduled, but we have some things that'll be of interest to a lot of individuals. Potentially a couple of site plans and entrance quarters. Then we have our Charlottesville plans together. Consultants coming and speaking concerning housing aspects as well as a project update. And Jenny will be on here tonight as well to give you all a monthly update. We'll have a brief presentation from Jaunt, about 10 minutes, and then we are working to have the individuals working with the Star Hill Community Visioning Plan speaking. So it's, our regular meeting's going to look a lot more like a work session. But we're grateful that we're able to move forward with some of these things that we've had out there for quite a while. Work continues with the comp plan. I'll let Jenny give the update when she gets to that during matters from the public. And we continue to work remotely mostly. We have some folks who are in the office, but most folks are working remotely. We have significant numbers of applications that are coming in. We average between 20 and 30 building permits coming in on our Friday drop-off, in addition to that which is mailed in. And then we have a number of site plans that are under review. So we have remained very, very busy and things are working pretty well remotely. Also want to note, we have a number of things on the council agenda on next Monday. The other side of Lindonia, the, there's a buy-ride application underway for that, and they're going to be on that agenda. The Flint Hill development that you all saw last month is going to be going forward at that point in time. We also have a couple of things that we'll be talking with council about concerning community meetings for our rezoning SUP and new site plan applications. And so council requested that we bring forth a guidance document for that, and so that'll be part of the discussion. Council's got a very hefty agenda on Monday, so I recommend taking a look at that just to see what they have going on. Many of us will be engaged that evening. And that's all I have.
You mentioned that Jenny is going to be presented.
Jenny's gonna, is calling in during matters from the public tonight to provide Jenny from RHI to give a little update on the comp plan.
Maybe we should begin with Jenny before I open it up to everybody that's in the lobby.
Okay, our Mr. Rice.
We'll probably give Jenny a few more minutes than we'll give the other folks.
I got you. Understood.
And I've got a question about their report, if that's okay. So is that council agenda posted online now, or should we expect it in the next couple of days?
It should be in the next couple of days.
Okay, and so is the hope that once that guidance is issued, that discretionary applications to build new housing will be allowed again?
Well, so we are accepting all applications at this point in time, but there are some applications that require community meetings and discussions, and that that item has to be, there has to be a means and process to have that happen. So we are reviewing and processing the applications as they come in, and everyone can bring in things. We just don't quite have an avenue for a few items to move forward.
Okay, I see. Yeah, and I noticed that on one of our consent agenda site plans tonight. So once that guidance is adopted by council, then all of the pieces will be in place for those applications to be complete? Is that right?
It will allow a process moving forward to the next step.
Okay, thanks.
Missy, I have a question. The Star Hill, it's been some time since I've looked for the Star Hill master plan proposal. And when I did, it was not online. Is that now available online?
Um, I don't know that we, we've.
I see Rory shaking his head yes, so.
If you go to newhilldev.org, they have it posted there. Great, thank you.
Very robust document. I'm glad that they, I'll take a look and make sure that's the version that you all will be getting. So we'll, we'll confirm that with you guys.
All right, Mr. Rice.
Yes, Chair.
Is Jenny in the lobby?
She is. She has her hand up. Jennifer, if you are ready, you can speak.
Great, thank you. Yes, thanks for having me. I'm Jenny Koch, and I'm here representing the Seaville Plans Together consultant team. As the Planning Commission and many others who are probably listening know, Seaville Plans Together is the name of the process that's led by the Department of Neighborhood Development Services with our consultant team. The process includes an update to the comprehensive plan, including the development of a housing plan and also an update to the zoning ordinance after completion of the comprehensive plan update. So I just wanted to pop in and give an update on where we are. Last time I spoke with you, we were in the middle of our May and June engagement efforts. In May and June, we were focused on sharing information about the project, making sure people knew what Seaville Plans Together is, what the process will be moving forward, and how they can be involved. So we were focused particularly at that stage in May and June on giving input related to priorities and goals for the future, particularly related to equity and affordability. So we held several webinars and many small group discussions. We also had a survey open for, I think it was about five weeks, maybe a little bit longer, to get input on those issues, and that survey was available both online and through paper distribution. I'll note the, two of the three webinars were recorded. The third one had a technical error, but two of them are recorded. They're on the website. I would also encourage everyone to sign up for the project email list, which can also be found on the website. You get updates when there's upcoming events or opportunities. Just to give a quick overview of what we heard, we were excited to get over 1,000 survey responses, including, I think about eight to 10 in Spanish, which was great. The survey closed about two and a half weeks ago, so we're still deep into all that data. There's a lot of great input that we got. And we are planning to process that and share a summary this summer. I'll note, you know, we have the website available at seavilleplantedtogether.com, but we also started in May a toll-free number that people can call to listen to a brief, I think it's about a two-minute project overview. It's available in English and Spanish, and people can provide input or ask questions in the form of a voicemail. So that number is still active. It's 833-752-6428. But I guess in closing, I want to thank everyone who helped us reach out. You know, we, even with really extensive extra outreach efforts through ourselves and with everyone that helped out, we know we still weren't able to reach everyone, particularly because of COVID-related restrictions that we know a lot of people have been struggling with. So we're looking forward to the fall when we'll be coming back to talk with everyone about, you know, what that input that we received was and what it might mean moving forward for the plan. So as Missy noted, we'll be coming back to you all in August, and we'll have a larger discussion at that point. And part of that will include looking at what future engagement might look like. One last note I want to let you know that we did is we did schedule a utility bill mailing, and so that went out. I think that's going out this week, 20,000 or a little more. So that was great. Thanks to the city for helping us get that out. It's in a little project overview in English and Spanish. The last thing I would say is if anyone who's listening wants to reach out, you can reach us directly at engage@seavilleplantedtogether.com.
Great. Any questions for Jenny?
Yeah, so is there a specific ask in that utility mailer going out this week now that the survey is over? And I guess the question broadly is, how do you continue to engage now that the survey is over and the small group discussions have ended? Is it just leave a message on that voicemail?
No, I think right now the real sort of call to action in that mailer is, I mean, yes, you're right, the survey is not open anymore. So we want people to keep becoming aware of this process that's going on. You know, we weren't able to schedule an earlier mailing because of how, you know, it's scheduled for quite a ways out. So this was the first sort of point we could do that. So we really, we're hoping people, yeah, call if they don't have access to the internet. We hope they'll call that number and they can, you know, leave their number and we'll reach out to them. Or they can sign up for the email list. It sort of lists out the different ways that people can stay in touch with the project.
Anything else?
Are you guys still on target for the timeline that's listed on the website?
Overall, the, the different elements of the project, the comp plan overall, zoning, the housing element of the comp plan, I, as of right now, we don't have changes to those. I think what may change a bit slightly is the sort of, the exact location of those little community engagement bubbles. But the number of times we're looking to come out to people and the topics are not changing, they just may need to shift a slight bit. And we can talk more about that at the meeting in August. I'll be happy to do that.
Anything else?
And so I know it's still early on analyzing the survey responses, but I know you have the optional last section to gather demographic data. Do you have a sense of how many of the respondents you got that from and what the, you know, demographic makeup of respondents was?
Yeah, let's see. It looks like, it depends on the question. You know, we asked, in case people don't recall, we asked sort of where do you live? You know, see Charlottesville, the county. We asked for neighborhood, age, income, etc. And so it sort of ranges between 700 and, and then almost everyone had answered some of those questions. And, you know, I think we, overall, there's a good sort of spread of people geographically. It looks like a lot of different neighborhoods represented, different income levels, etc. I think what needs to be looked at more is sort of how it's reflective of the, since it includes people who are from the county and the city, you know, when we look at the demographics and how they compare to the the city versus the region, we need to still look a little closer at that. But we do have, I think, a good amount of data that will allow a good comparison.
And when you make your final report, will it be mostly, you know, quantitative data presenting the, you know, kind of straightforward answers, or is there going to be some way that you guys are going to make those free-form answers public as well?
So we are, that's what's taking the most time now is we're going through encoding all of those by hand, which is a very interesting process, but it does take a bit of time. So we are planning to make some version of that accessible. We want people to see how we thought about those different responses. So there will be a summary that, you know, a quicker takeaway, but for people who want to dig into the data more, we will make either some sort of categorized version that sort of categorizes each of the longer responses or some full version of those. We need to still figure out what would work best because it really is a large amount of data.
Okay, so the intention is to possibly release the raw data?
Oh, no, I think we, I, we planned, we spoke about that with NDS, I think, last week, and we do plan to release the data. I know there's a precedent for that, and I think that certainly makes sense.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Rice, I think we are ready to open it up for matters presented by the public. And these things should be, things are not on the formal agenda. So, Mr. Rice, is anyone in the lobby hands raised?
We do have one, Chair Mitchell. This is Robin Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, I am going to unmute you, and you may have to unmute yourself.
And Robin, welcome in. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, it's very weird comment, but I'm a talk show host, so maybe that's why. But in the backfield where there is a flood zone next to the Ravanna River Company, I spoke to Wendell Woods, and he's willing to develop it into a hemp field. Right now, there's a wildflower farm going on, and it's doing really well. In fact, they didn't have to reseed it. And so this occurred to me because there's actually a market for hemp fiber, which is the male fiber, and he has 15 acres there, and he can't do anything with it. He can't even sell it, apparently, because nobody can build on it. So I came up with this idea with an Elkton farmer who's actually started up a factory. And this also is July 1st. The governor is talking about developing the industry in Virginia, which North Carolina, you know, is, is way ahead of us and that sort of thing. But this is a whole field here that, once you develop the hemp, topsoil will happen. And I actually got on a webinar meeting, a Zoom meeting with UVA Sustainability, and Elizabeth McClure, she's an engineer, I asked her the question too, what about growing hemp on a flood zone or whatever, and she was so excited about it. She said, this is exactly what we need in our climate right now. It takes up all the fossil fuels and blah, blah, blah. But this is, you know, it's going to help with the whole border of, you know, Charlottesville going into the river. You know, that whole land erosion thing. Okay, that's my question. I think it's for Missy. I think Missy knows all about that, that parcel.
Well, what we won't do tonight, but we, Missy may get back with you offline. We won't get into a back and forth discussion, but that is still very helpful information, and we will, we will look into it and, and take it from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice is in the lobby with their hand raised.
We do have 13 attendees, but no one with their hand up yet. If anybody would like to speak during this portion of the meeting, please raise your hand and we'll call on you.
And this would be things that are related to things that are not on the formal agenda.
No takers, Chair.
All right, we need one more council person, so we will be in recess for five minutes. Five minutes.
Brian, are you there?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Wheeler.
Oh.
Or could somebody send Michael a link to the meeting?
Joe, did you get that?
They're like, they're custom links, so.
Oh, oh, hi Heather, never mind. I hadn't seen you before.
Oh.
I'll tell Michael he doesn't have to come on unless he wants to.
Is Lloyd on? We need three of us.
He was.
He was, now he's not.
Well, if somebody can send Michael a link, then. I don't know.
They're custom links. I think he needs his own link.
Lloyd.
Mr. Mitchell, while that's being worked out, we still have the consent agenda to move forward.
Oh, thank you. I always forget that. Is there a motion relating to the consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? The consent agenda is.
We're, we're still in a recess, so the public is not hearing us. You set the timer for five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Good point. I should have done this before with recess. My, forgive me.
Forty-seven seconds.
I always skip that, don't I? I always skip that, don't I?
It's all right.
Did we get, we got Heather, Sina, and Lloyd vanished. Where do you go? Maybe he'll be back.
So it doesn't look like Gary's back either.
All right, well, while we're waiting for council, let's go through the consent agenda. Is there a motion to do something with the consent agenda?
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and probably seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any objections? Right, the consent agenda has been approved. And Gary's back. And did anyone get ahold of Michael?
I think he's just.
We just, we need to give him his link again.
Okay, and does anyone know what happened to Lloyd?
Well, as long as.
I see Lloyd, there's.
Okay, we're good. Right?
Okay.
We are ready, we are now ready to move into the second phase of our meeting. And we've got a couple of, a couple of items that we need to review and then make a recommendation to council and get public input on. The.
Mister, Mister Chair, we need to give council the opportunity to gavelan.
Madam Vice Mayor, is council in order?
We appear to be.
Okay, as good as we're getting for now.
Is Michael in?
Michael isn't, but we can begin because we've got Lloyd back.
Okay.
I just sent a, another registration link to Council Payne, so we'll see if he.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, once again.
Chairman Mitchell, before we start this public hearing, I just want to reiterate that even though I've been appointed to the CRHA board, they're not a, a they're not receiving funds from this grant, so I will be able to participate without bias.
Very good, cool. All right, the first two items is the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Fund for fiscal year 2021. As part of the public participation process, we are responsible for reviewing the recommendations that have been submitted by the block grant task force. And we are then to make recommendations to council relating to the recommendations by the block grant task force. In fiscal year 2021, we expect to receive $249,699 for the coronavirus funds from H U D. These monies are expected to be used to prevent, to prep for, and to act to the virus. With that, I think there may be a brief presentation from staff. And who's doing that, Ms. Chrissy?
Erin Attack will be doing that. She's right online here.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so as mentioned, the city of, the city of Charlottesville has been authorized a special allocation of community development block grant coronavirus funds, also known as the CDBGCV, to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. This has been the major HUD labeled priority. This allocation was authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, to respond to the coronavirus. We received $246,699 for the 2020-2021 program year. All award applicants are able to use the funds for a two-year period, so once they get the funds, they can have maximum two years to spend it. Minimum minutes from the CDBG task force are attached, which outline the recommendations made. Note, all projects went through and extensive reviewed by the CDBG Home Task Force as a result of the RFP process, and I'll go through that briefly. So, the CDBGCV proposals, the city of Charlottesville began accepting them May 4th through May 18th, 2020. Acceptable projects included the support of a viable urban community through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity for low and moderate income citizens to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. All applicants were required to connect the activity to the CDBG City Council priorities, which are updated yearly. The city also required all applicants to schedule a mandatory 30-minute technical assistance meeting with myself. So during this meeting, we went over grant requirements like filing, invoicing, the CDBG program requirements, the CDBGCV program requirements, so they're a little bit different this year, especially with that two-year spending period. And then how the audits run. And then we also went over past audits and organizational capacity requirements. In total, I met with 11 applicants and received five applications on time. One application came in late, so that was not considered for scoring. And then applications received. So for economic development, the overall funding award was split up three ways: public services, economic development, and administrative and planning. Under economic development, funds are proposed to be used for providing microbusiness grants to assist 24 business owners with business expenses. So the grants are going to be cut at $4,000. And in that $4,000 grant, $3,000 will go towards business expenses, so that's like rent, payroll, and replacing inventory. And then the remaining $1,000 will go towards technical assistance support for the business owner. So that'll help with helping the business owner adapt to the new economic environment that we're in right now. So bringing a business online, helping with financial planning and cleaning, that'll be the remaining $1,000. The CDBG Task Force Subcommittee, the Strategic Action Team, reviewed a total of one application and made a funding recommendation to award the Community Investment Collaborative a funding amount of $98,679.60. For, for public service programs, the estimated benefits include homeless prevention assistance in the form of rental and utility payments and, and hiring an additional staff person to help with increased intake appointments for the homeless prevention for a minimum of 25 households. In addition, the benefits include hiring two full-time community health worker positions that will act as liaisons for testing and wraparound services to help inform the community of the Health Department's COVID-19 strategy and engage the priority populations in COVID-19 prevention. The CDBG Task Force reviewed a total of four applications and made a funding recommendation to award Thomas Jefferson Health District in a total of $49,661.78 and Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless in $49,017.82 with CDBGCV funding. And then the last umbrella for the CDBGCV award is the administration and planning. So applicants were only able to apply for the econ and the public service umbrellas. The admin and planning umbrella goes towards helping pay for grant-related costs and for citizen participation. So these are costs like Davis Bacon Environmental Review and Section 3 that the city is required to uphold with HUD. And that's a total of $49,339.80. So, the award and approval of these funds is required to follow the same regulation as the CDBG funds, the regular CDBG. Once Planning Commission has reviewed and made their funding recommendation on the activities, the CDBGCV budget will be brought back to City Council for final approval on August 3rd. And today, we have a couple of applicants in the audience to answer any questions as well as task force members. And I'm here as well.
So, does UVA have any questions they'd like to ask?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Green?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Yeah, I'd like to focus on this, the 20% that's for administration and planning. So I see that HUD recommends, or HUD requires a cap of 20% of the funds to be spent on that. And I'm, I'm trying to understand, you know, why we need to spend the maximum allowed by federal rules? What exactly those funds are going to be going to? And, you know, who will be doing those things?
So, this goes to pay for a wide range of federal-related. It depends on, okay, I could go at, go at this a couple of different ways. Depending on what the activity is that we're funding, there's a number of different federal requirements that come with it. So, if an activity hits a certain funding threshold, sometimes Davis Bacon gets triggered, sometimes Section 3 gets triggered, sometimes environmental reviews get triggered. And then with that comes community engagement process. And those all have to be paid through the admin and planning portion of the CDBG grant. And generally, we block off 20% of it, just because the city always runs through all of the 20%. Just through the number of applicants we get each year, each year. That's why we blocked off 20%.
I see. So in terms of practically, like, in a practical matter, what they're going to be spent on, it's compliance with these federal rules, and I guess reporting and verifying that compliance, and then whatever costs is associated with the community engagement, which I guess I assume will be in the form of like Zoom meetings nowadays?
Yeah, nowadays at Zoom meetings, we also have to, we have reports that we have to submit. Keeping track of those reports, auditing. Those all have paper trails that we have to pay for.
Yeah, okay. So so I'm assuming most of that reporting will be done by you, I guess? Are there like other consultants that will be brought in for things like those audits that are expensive? Or, you know, I guess maybe another way to word this is like, is this going to consume all of your time for the next year?
It, it's generally me.
Yep, so like, assuming that you're also going to be doing other things over the next year, or even, even if this is going to consume all your time, the city probably already budgeted, you know, for you to be employed by the city. So does this money coming from the federal government to essentially pay for your time for all this implicitly free up the money that would have been otherwise allocated to, like, pay for your position? Does that make sense?
Uh, kind of. So the CDBG grant does also pay for my position. I don't know if I understood that clearly.
Chrissy, would you like to?
Missy?
Excuse me.
Unmute. Oh, I can unmute now. Yes, so, so Erin's position is funded through CDBG. Because the CDBG allotment is a lot less than it used to be, the CDBG funds don't necessarily cover all of her salary, so the city puts in the additional amount to maintain that position. But Erin also has a lot of roles in addition to the CDBG, and now adding in CDBGCV will mean that she'll be managing additional projects. So those funds will support the salary, but they're also items such as the accounting and the legal, and if we do have to outsource for some sort of other aspect that funding covers that. I, I see, I see what you're trying, you know, I see, I, I, we would love to put more towards the program, but we also want to be able to address the expenses that once we accept CDBG funding, there are a lot of reporting and requirements that are involved. And so we have to support those in order to get the allocation at all.
I see. So it's not that we already allocated, you know, city funds to pay Ms. Attack, it's that the money actually comes from the federal government, and this is what pays her. Okay, that makes more sense to me then. Thanks.
Mr. Soliets?
One, one thing, with this funding and with this position, if we, the city, once we accept these funds, if we don't have those reports and we don't monitor the funding, we have to pay those funds back to the federal government, plus a penalty, a monster penalty. And we definitely don't have that budgeted. So it, it is an administration thing that is, is definitely necessary.
Alex, did you want to say something?
That's correct. Yeah, we have to pay penalty and the money back.
Alex, I was right about one thing today. That's awesome.
All right, Mr. Soliets?
Thank you very much. Helpful packet, it was useful to go through the, the notes of everything the committee went through that helped me understand what they were thinking. Page 63, which lays out the scoring, is extremely helpful. And thank you for recommending that. I'll review that again. I see there's actually two rounds of scoring there. There's a final score and I think average. I may be getting those names wrong, this is off the dome. Here we go. Total score and final average. Can you talk me through that and how that relates to the amounts recommended?
Okay, so the total score, I'm just adding up what's in the subtotal column altogether for that particular applicant. And then final average, I'm just dividing everything out by the number of people who submitted the scores in to get me that orange or that yellow box score. And then the CDBG task force used the yellow box score or orange box score to make their funding recommendation and their deliberation during the meeting that we had.
The CIC is not the highest scoring, but it receives the most money. Can you explain why?
So CIC received a score of 32.6. Am I seeing that correctly?
Yes.
Yes. So they were the only economic development application received for the CDBGCV award. And the Task Force Subcommittee, the Strategic Action Team, went back and forth about whether we wanted to award CIC the full funding amount or to put forth the, or to give CIC the partial funding, or to give all the economic development funds into public services, given that there were so many applications in public services. In the end, they looked at the scores and they saw that TJHD, the Thomas Jefferson Health District, T-JAC, and CIC were the top three scorers, so they decided to give CIC the full economic development umbrella.
Was the concern that it was in some way more pressing to the current health crisis?
Yeah, they did want to address, they did want to highlight that, yes, businesses are also a focus for the city. So we wanted to make sure that we gave support to the microenterprises that needed it for the 0 to 50% AMI.
Thank you.
Mr. Landra?
No questions, thank you.
All right, before we open up the lobby, is there any, are, before we open up the lobby, are there any other questions for staff? Ms. Rice, is there anyone in the lobby that would like to speak?
Right now, we have 16 attendees. Nobody with their hand up. If you would like to address the commission, please raise your hand. And we do have one, Ms. Rebecca Schmidt. And you are now unmuted, Rebecca.
Ms. Schmidt, welcome in. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, good evening. This is Rebecca Schmidt from the Thomas Jefferson Health District. I just wanted to comment, to clarify our application. We applied for the full amount of the public service grant, and that was to fund two full-time community health workers at $18 an hour. And with the funding that's been recommended, we could hire one community health worker full-time at 18 an hour. So I just, I didn't want, I wanted to clarify that so everyone was aware of how much we would be paying and the number of positions we would be staffing. So, thank you.
Very good, thanks. Do we have anyone else, Ms. Rice?
We have, let's see, Ms. Nancy Carpenter, Ms. Carpenter, go ahead.
Ms. Carpenter, welcome in. Please keep your comments to three. Ms. Carpenter, welcome in. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
I will, and thank you very much, Commissioner, for allowing me just to speak as a task force member. I think we did some good deliberations and there were some really good applications. And I feel like we did our due diligence in trying to use the CV money, you know, for the purposes that it was meant to be utilized for in our committee. And I hope that the commission moves forward with a recommendation to the council to accept our recommendations for how this money should be appropriated. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Is there anyone else?
If anybody would else like to make a comment, please raise your hand. We'll call on you. That appears to be it. Chair Mitchell.
All right, then we will end that part of the Republican session and begin our deliberations. Does any commissioner have any thoughts?
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions from staff if that, if that's okay. Hopefully Gary is okay over there. He seems to be frantically gesturing. But so I, I think I generally understand what each of the applications were for from the titles on page fifty-two and from the minutes of the CBDG committee. But specifically I have questions about the Office of Economic Development application, the Go Delivery Self Odyssey, which is not a very descriptive name. And what that is and why that wasn't an economic development category fund, funding request?
So the OED application, their main focus was to implement services within the downtown job center and home-to-hope program that would identify, assess and provide intensive case management to justice-involved women to address barriers to relate, that relate to COVID-19 pandemic issues. So these were issues concerning housing stabilization, peer support and focused programming for low-income women underserved without incarceration and release. The reason why it wasn't included into the economic development portion of the CDBGCV award was because they were more focused on public service and housing rather than more the technical, financial planning and business development aspects. If that makes sense.
And then for the CIC grants, I think you just mentioned that they'd be for entrepreneurs at zero to fifty percent AMI. Was that right?
Correct.
And is that a program that exists outside of this grant? That like we're, we're funding and supplementing? Or is it, is this that program in its entirety?
So this is kind of, it kind of does exist and it kind of doesn't. They're adding a new COVID-19 aspect to it with the technical support to help business owners adapt to the new COVID-19 environment with the one thousand dollar grant portion. They do have a micro enterprise scholarship grant with the normal CDBG allocation they have received for the FY twenty-twenty year. So yes and no.
Okay. And so the grants are all one thousand dollars each?
They're four thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollars. I see. And
They're aiming to help twenty-four business owners.
Okay, so that's pretty low overhead then, just twenty-six hundred dollars that won't be going to those business owners? Or will? Is that right?
Well, they, they have four thousand. I think Stephen's here if he wants to help address some of those questions. I read four thousand. Yeah, Stephen Davis is in the attendees portion of the Zoom call. Is there any way we can promote him?
Oh, Mr. Rice, we're looking for Stephen. Stephen, what is Stephen's last name?
Davis.
We're looking for Stephen Davis, Ms. Rice.
Yes, I just promoted Mr. Davis. There might be a delay. And Mr. Davis, when you're promoted, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. Stephen Davis with CIC. I believe the question was related to our overhead with this grant, our intention. Oh, so first of all. This is a, while we do regularly do micro loans, we are currently helping administer some other business grant programs. This is a special case related to COVID grants that are helping businesses impacted because of the pandemic and required shutdowns and so forth. And so we are. So it is a special kind of one-time thing, although we've done things like it before and will continue. On this program, we endeavor to keep our overhead very low so that we, as much of the money as possible could go directly to businesses. So I believe it was that, you know, two or three thousand dollars in the end was the kind of the administrative cost and everything else is going to be funneled to help the businesses here.
Cool.
Thanks. All right.
We are, we're in the public hearing session right now. So let, let's see if there's anyone else who wants to speak unless you've
Do we need to close the public hearing before we start the interrogation?
Yeah, yeah, right. Let us finish the public hearing. Is there everyone, I'm not sure everyone's spoken yet.
My bad, I thought we
Mr. Rice.
As chair.
Is anyone else that would like to speak?
If anybody would like to speak during this portion of the hearing, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Don't have any, anybody raising their hand, Chair?
Right, the public hearing is now closed. Now, Mr. Stolzenberg, you had a thought. You're muted.
Uh, yeah, I guess probably my last program-specific question or application specific. For the Habitat application that was late. Was there like a, I guess, why did they submit it even though it was late? If late applications weren't going to be submitted, was it like egregiously late or like five minutes past the deadline? What's the deal there?
So they were about fifteen minutes late and I'm not, they, they claimed that they did submit it, the application. I asked for a, the, the, the new website, online submission sends a receipt. Once you do submit the application, I asked for that receipt and they didn't have it. So I took their copy of the Word document for record, but per the program guidelines, we don't grade late applications.
Okay. Thanks. I think that's my last question. I'll let other people.
Chair Mitchell, I have a motion. I would like to move that we approve the recommendation as submitted by this task force to counsel based on the fact that we have a committee that does all of this research with all these applications and they've spent a lot of hard work and, and their time. So I, my motion is for approval to move this to counsel. As is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, would you pull the board?
Sure. Mr. Landra.
Aye.
Mr. Heaton. Mr. Heaton appears to be on the phone. Mr. Heaton?
Yes or no?
Mr. Heaton is going to have to excuse himself.
I gotcha. Okay.
Okay, so I will be turning off my video.
All right.
This should, I, I can vote in the affirmative and then leave the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I vote in the affirmative and say adios.
You'll be back, right?
Okay, Mr. Soliets.
I hope you all are right. Yes.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Aye. Right, so we will recommend approval. Let's see, the next item is a zoning, a rezoning request. It is ZM one nine zero 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 four. The property is located at nine oh nine Landonia Circle. The applicant would like to rezon a lot from B one to B two. The lot is about point six eight acres. The applicant would like to modernize and expand a car wash that is in an adjoining lot. The adjoining lot is located on Long Street, which is effectively the two fifty bypass. The issue is that our car washes are not permitted in B one, but they are permitted in B two. But the intensity of use in B two is greater than it is in B one. So the applicant has offered a number of proffers to restrict some of the uses. Some of the restrictions proffered are amusement centers, auditoriums, theaters, movie theaters, bowling alleys. I'm thinking private clubs, dry cleaning establishments, dance halls and all-night pharmacies. So I think Mr. Winter is managing this application.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, Chair Mitchell? Okay, good evening, Commissioner. I'm Joey Winner. I'm a city planner with the Department of Neighborhood Development Services. And this item before you is a rezoning petition for nine oh nine Landonia Circle. An application for a zoning map amendment was submitted in December twenty nineteen, which proposes a zoning change from B one business to B two business. Now, the general use, land use plan calls for low-density residential development at this location. But the subject property is in a commercial district and it has been since nineteen ninety-one. And the previous use at the subject property was also a commercial use. The owner of the car wash, which is adjacent to this subject property, purchased the parcel in two thousand nineteen and intends to expand the car wash that they have on two parcels directly adjacent to it. And a rezoning is required here because car washes are not a permitted use in the B one district. The existing car wash currently lies on two parcels. It includes a self-serve car wash with vacuuming, an automatic car wash and a propane refilling deos. And those uses would remain identical if the proposed expanded and renovated car wash. Now, there is no site plan proffered with this rezoning application, but the applicant did include a proper statement, as Chair Mitchell mentioned, to prohibit, to prohibit several of the more intense uses allowed in the B two zoning district. And the applicant, I should note, has consistently, consistently indicated to staff that their intent is to develop this property as part of the expanded car wash. In terms of community engagement, now this application came in before the pandemic. So all required community engagement was held prior to any social distancing restrictions. The applicant held a community meeting as required by City Code Section thirty-four forty-one C two on February thirteenth at Burnley Moran Elementary School. Two members of the public did attend that meeting and were generally supportive of the applicant's plans for the property. And staff received no written feedback in favor of or opposed to this rezoning application. And staff recommends approval of this rezoning application. Neighbors have not raised any concerns about rezoning the subject property for the purposes of a car wash. And an adequate transition exists between the commercial, commercial use on this property and the residential uses to the north and west. There is a significant change in elevation at the site and there is a natural landscaping buffer which is required to remain in place. Furthermore, required improvements to pedestrian connectivity, specifically sidewalk improvements along Landonia Circle will benefit the nearby residential areas. And the proposed zoning change could also contribute to the city's goals under the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan related to economic sustainability. So I will just, in conclusion, say, please remember that the role of Planning Commission is to make an advisory recommendation to City Council on this proposed rezoning based on the factors listed in City Code Section thirty-four forty-two A. Mr. Aaron Revere is on this Zoom call as representative of the applicant, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Winter?
So that vegetative buffer, is the current vegetative buffer in place in excess of the required amount? That is, they need to keep a buffer in place, but is it possible that they'll remove part of it?
There are requirements in the zoning code as to how much buffer needs to be there. You will see in the applicant's presentation, they do intend to keep landscaping there. There is no specific proffer or indication as to how much landscape will be there. We are also not at the site plan stage yet. So there are other considerations that need to be taken into account before you just promise to keep a specific tree there. A specific look to the site until it's been fully engineered and determined that that's actually feasible.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Winner. In the report, staff states that the neighbors did not raise any concerns about rezoning for the purpose of expanding the car wash, and you just said it again now. Did, have the neighbors, did they understand that, would they have a, a problem if it was a hotel that was put here or a convenience store or a laundromat or a shopping center or laundry, all of which are allowed under the B two by right?
Yes, that's a, that's a good question and I cannot speak for all the neighbors. I certainly do not speak for any of the neighbors. At the community meeting, I was there. The two nice ladies that were there. I sort of took, took this and, and brought it to them and they did not indicate that they were concerned about any of the B two uses. And I think it is, it is worth mentioning that this is not a proffered rezoning for a specific car wash, but we do have all indications from the applicant that that is what they intend to develop the site as.
Yes, but that's sort of beside the point, isn't it? It's a B two that they're asking for.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from the applicant? Mr. Winter, is the applicant ready?
The applicant is here in the lobby.
I, I actually did promote him to panelist. Mr. Revere, if you can hear us, please unmute your mic.
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening, Mr. Revere.
Good evening. I'm, I'm ready whenever it suits you.
Yeah, I will pull up the applicant's presentation right now if you bear with me for one second while I get that up. If you continue to bear with me as I, I work here.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you all for having us. Appreciate it.
There, this should be pulling up now. Are you able to see that?
It is. Yes.
Yeah, I can see it. Joey, you'll drive that as we go through it for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, um, if you're okay to proceed, I'll go right into a presentation. Is that suited you?
You may proceed.
Well, thank you, Chair Mitchell, Commissioners. Appreciate your time and consideration this evening for this zoning amendment request to enable the, what has always been the All-American Car Wash. We're going to expand it into the new brand of the Tiger Wash here located on Long Street. My name is Aaron Revere. I'm the authorized representative for Tiger Fuel, who is the owner and operator of all the All-American and Tiger Wash facilities in and around the region. I've been authorized to advance this project. Joey, thank you and your colleagues for all your help and efforts through the various meetings to get to where we are today. Appreciate it. If we could jump to the first real slide here. As Joey has noted, and I will make good efforts to try not to repeat too much of what Joey did in his thorough presentation here. But as he noted, we're requesting the rezoned parcel forty-nine seventy-nine, the red parcel here, from B one to B two. That site was the former daycare facility and it is adjacent to our existing car wash where we have operated for more than twenty-five years on the two front adjacent parcels that are down along Route two fifty, AKA Long Street. As you can see, we have commercial uses next to us on both sides along Long Street. We do have Burnley Moran Elementary School across the street. And to the north, there is single-family residential. And to the north, there is single-family residential. Our intent is to clean up and consolidate the entire site and bring our operations up to modern standards, continue serving our long list of regular customers, both individuals and businesses alike, and maintain a well-balanced transition with the neighbors and our other uses within this corridor. We think we can do that. Next slide, please. I have some site plans and then some aerials here to help you all contextualize some of this. Currently, the site houses five self-serve bay car washes, zigzag feature down in the front, one automated car wash tunnel, several freestanding self-serve vacuums, a propane refilling station, and, you know, air for tires, vending, those types of things on the, on the site. We intend to keep essentially the same operational use, except we're actually going to only go down to four self-serve bay washes, and improved and enclosed automated car wash tunnel. As you can see from the conceptual fit and layout, the building square footage will stay pretty comparable to the overall site is now. If we go to the next slide, Joey. The aerial shows that as well. As you can see, we're gonna repeat that zigzag feature. That's really where the self-serve car washes are. And then the, the top end on the zigzag was the automated car wash. If you take that square footage in the old daycare facility, it's, it's largely just repurposed into the more automated car wash tunnel. And we're nicely able to pull the car wash back away from the edge of Long Street, as I'm sure you have all seen it clearly as you drive up and down 250. So reinvestment in our local business, adding service to our customers, and working to improve that entry corridor aesthetic as well. Next slide. So as Joey noted, we did hold a neighborhood meeting over at Burley Moran, and they wanted to see us address several things. The, the homeless that was beginning to frequent the old daycare facility wanted to help us address that, clean it up, make sure we had thoughtful landscaping adjacent to the residential areas, improve the pedestrian connectivity, make sure during the site plan process that we work city to avoid light pollution. And they wanted to not encourage automobile traffic through the neighborhood. And as I think you can see, as they did, that we intend to address each of these items well within our plan. We will maintain our current access points down at the front of the site that we use today to avoid changes in traffic patterns. And we'll include an upgrade sidewalk, which is the yellow feature here I highlighted along the edge of the pavement of the existing Landonia Circle to enhance that pedestrian connectivity from the neighborhood down into this commercial area. And of course, we have to retain that birthday sign out front as an institution, and it means a lot to everybody on a regular basis, so we will keep that as is. Next slide, please. Given that the development is already in a commercial site, you know, the utilities are already there. So our new facility, we're going to focus on modernizing it, making it more efficient than the current and dated one. As we go through the site plan process, we'll, of course, address stormwater, lighting, parking, all the things that are required here. And as you can see, the site can and will adequately be able to address all of those things well. Given our recent news regarding alt energy, we also are considering some solar on that flat roof there that can face south. We think it's a great thing and be a part of that. We'll create some jobs right now using these facilities. It's about five full-time and seven part-time jobs further. As is talked about, we've noted several uses in the rezoning that just are clearly not in keeping with the location, and it was quick and easy to proffer those out and, and never use those. But our intent clearly is, if we are able to get your recommendation as well as council's approval, to immediately go into the site plan process for this project as you see it right now. We've, we've already worked on the line, design layout with Order Street Design Studio, and then, of course, design development here. So great advice on that. Next slide, please, Joey. So some before and after images for you based on these current site plans. This is the westward view on 250. As you can see, this once helps to give you a good labor of what we're thinking about here, but pulling back that self-serve car wash from the edge of the pavement is an immediate change in the area. It's in great improvement. We're going to soften the color palette. And then, of course, work with suitable landscaping and sidewalks makes it, makes a nice difference. We are considering a biofilter and landscaping down in the front here, but of course, we need to go through all the calc, so it's site plan review to make sure that, that will work and can work with sight lines and ability to do all of that. But again, keeping that birthday sign out there, and for us also not just entering our site and immediately seeing our trash dumpster is going to be an improvement as well for our customers. Next one. This is the east view down 250. You'll see more of the same similar results. And one of the things we, we stroked, worked hard to do is not have a long building facade down the roadway, helping break up that design aesthetic, and it helps provide views into our property. And it just is a software experience as well as it's improved circulation for our customers. And all of our uses can queue onsite, which is important to us as well. Next slide. This is a suddenly view down Coleman Street. So Coleman Street comes, coming north, south, down into where that white truck is parked. That's at the T intersection at the top of Landonia Circle. Behind that is the vegetation where our sites are. There was a good question asked previously about the vegetation. A lot of that tree cover there is in, it's not in the best health. So we are going to be working on most of those trees there, but we will be replanting it. A lot of it's covered in ivy, and there's a lot of privet and other things, trash that was in there. But that's the view there largely unchanged. As you can see, we envision some sort of fence might be down there next to where the pedestrian path will be. But otherwise, not much of a visual change here with new landscaping. One more slide, Joey. This is the east review of that same spot, taken a different day, looking to where those white trucks had been. So Coleman Street comes into the backside of that boat, and it tees right at the sidewalk, which would run down the north side of our site and generally go down along the edge of pavement of Landonia Circle. As you hit that T though in Landonia Circle, there's some inconsistency with that, that pavement. So that, that actually provides alternative areas for softening up. But a good experience, whether it's a whiteboard fence or a split rail fence, we envision something there that would just have a better design aesthetic for the area. And that's it. Straightforward, and I'd love to talk through questions on things that maybe I didn't address as we, Joey and I went through this.
Right, questions?
So Tiger Fuels is a gas station company largely. Gas stations allowed by right under B2 and not in B1. Why should we believe that you guys aren't going to immediately turn around and build a gas station after the county didn't let you off 250?
We already got one right down the street, just in the county. And this is our car wash site, and we have customers who love this site, and our intent is to do a car wash here. And we've planned for, for the plan, so, yeah. And, and you know, I don't know if you know it, but we offer, we operate over a dozen car washes in the region, so.
Good to know?
Yes.
Mr. LaHindra, you look pensive.
No, I, I don't have any questions. It's a vast improvement, what's being proposed, and and, and I had no doubt, no, no doubt that Tiger Wash is sincere and wanting to develop the site. But as the world has learned over the last nine months, things change. That's all.
What do you think, Ms. Green?
Those are pretty much my same thoughts, is that it's a vast improvement, and that's what I saw from the beginning. But what I am concerned about are all the things left in that matrix for a B2. That's the concern.
Bill, what do you think?
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Sullyates?
Thanks.
Were there questions? Yes?
Yeah.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions, then I'm going to open it up to the lobby and see if there's anyone who'd like to speak. So, Mr. Rice, is there anyone in the lobby that would like to speak?
If you'd like to address commission, please raise your hand. No takers, Chair?
All right, then the public comment section is now closed. Thoughts, thoughts from the commission, no questions from council?
I have no questions, thank you.
I have one question that's really not a land use question. I'm just curious what Tiger Wash does about recycling water? And we've had issues about that in recent drought years. How do you all deal with water and water, water demand?
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and address that now. It's important to us as well. Most of these car washes, we recycle about 56% of the water on it. So reduce demand on the water, and we're also, we're phosphate-free chemicals and everything in there, so it's, it's, it's smart. It's, it's an improvement over the current facility that is there, that is very dated. And so it's a lot more efficient. It's more efficient than washing your car at home in your own driveway more often than not, so. I hope I'm answering your question squarely.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, I, I remember the drought in, I think it was 2002, when we were getting very, very close to, to running out of water. And there was a big flap about whether we should even allow car washes to continue. And Henry Weinshank's place out on 29 said, you know, you can't, you shouldn't be restricting all of us because some of us already recycle our water. What are you doing to us? And so the issue became, how do we distinguish among car washes based on their, on their water consumption, their recycling? I'm glad to hear that you've got some of those, some of those conditions already in place.
Yeah, we sure do. And, and again, we're keeping, we're actually reducing the self-serve bay count down by one, and all the modern equipment will be more efficient. We don't expect a major change, if at any, even with a, a better visitation than, than what we're currently experiencing at that facility, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more?
Yeah, what other environmental aspects are you looking at? What other green initiatives are you taking into account? I see, I mean, it's just, it's a lot of pavement.
Yes.
And, which means both a lot of runoff, a lot of stormwater, not going back into the ground. So are you looking at permeable pavers or anything like that as far as what can be done?
No, ma'am, mainly the, mainly the bio swales there. And while the impervious surface is a little bit higher, the building count, we're trying to keep that the same. The, the sites are developed already. But right now, they're not very well designed to help try and address onsite stormwater. So we've already tried to work with Allen and Water Street to help make sure that we are thinking about that onsite. In terms of the chemicals and things that we use, we try and operate well with phosphate-free and other things. I mentioned the solar as well. And then we do, we do a number of things, whether it's at our gas stations or other places where we allow people to offset their trips. Like your tank of gas, you can offset that by green trees and other things, so. Yeah, but in terms of site-specific, the main is that stormwater, and we're, we're very mindful of that, working to connect that, as well as native landscaping, the native treeless and everything that we'll use in that.
Thank you.
As far as the transportation, that, those entrances, that won't, that won't change. Has, as a engineering, taken a look at that to see if anything, we should not do a left out of there? Or will that hinder the Land, Landonia Circle?
So, Aaron, I'll, I'll jump in here and answer on behalf of staff. There is no site plan application at this point. When the site plan comes in, then traffic engineering will fully look at this and fully require everything under our code and figure out what makes sense best. But there have been no discussions to this point because there is no application.
And the biofilter right on the front, you, you said you were hoping to do that, but you're not sure. Have you done any preliminary engineering on that to, to see if you, if you are hopeful that that, I mean, you think that's what's going to happen? You don't see any reason not for that to happen?
We, we don't see any reason not for it to happen. I'm not sure that it is scaled to size. We're probably showing it oversized at this point to be conservative. But, but yeah, we have, and that, that is the low front corner of, of the site. And there's also, there's also a vegetated along the queue line in there that you can take a look at as well, so.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Is this a 24-hour operation?
Great, great question. The self-serve washes, as they are today, are open 24/7. The tunnel is not. It is 8 to 8, and the same with the propane, 8 to 8. So the default thing is not 20, 24/7. Great, great question. And we're going to keep it consistent with its current uses and not expand that at all.
And I see at the, the rear of the proposed development, there is a, it looks like some sort of drive-up device that you does it talk to you to get your, your fee for going through the drive-through wash?
You know, that's a great question. I'm not sure if it always has to talk. Usually, it's a, it's a self-touch screen where there's queues to go into that facility, and then it lights up for you to say, yeah, next, next enter. I can double-check that in the settings that, that are going to be used on that. Oftentimes, there are at least some volume there to make sure that you're accommodating any and all types of customers that you might get.
We, yeah, we do have contiguous residential properties right there at the back.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Won't those grades be drastically lower than the residence on top? I don't see, I, I was looking, I don't see the the numbers on the plan. I see them to the side, but what is that a?
It's a, it is a severe drop.
10-foot, 12-foot drop?
12, yeah, at least. So that would help if it's, if it's actually developed that way.
Can't we condition the rezoning on the application plan? Lisa, where are you? Lisa, can't we, can't we condition this rezoning on this application plan? No, it's not.
It's not a special use permit.
Ah, okay, sorry.
In that case, I believe I have a motion.
Yes.
On the basis that the proposal would service public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I move to recommend approval of application ZM19-00004.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, would you?
Mr. LaHindra?
No.
Okay. Mr. Soliates?
Yes.
Mr. Stolensper?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
I, I'd like to be clear about my vote. Again, I think this is a better thing, but to go to the, to, to council, maybe I, I think some other things need to be mitigated. You know, part of the promise of, of the rezoning should show the plan so that we can have some assurance that what's going to be there is what, what is, you know, here. That, that, that is my only reason for voting, no.
And I have the same, I have the same concerns that I feel like if it's possible under the new zoning, then you've got to look at it that way. And I'm looking at a three-story hotel next to a residential area, so.
All right, the recommendation to council will be to approve the rezoning. When will the site plan be? I know we don't have to review the site plan, but when we see it, like, and Mr. Winter?
I'm sorry, I believe I'm unmuted. We can't comment on that until they apply for a site plan. They would still have to get approval from city council, which would be relatively soon. That will go in front of city council, and then after that, whenever the applicant brings in the site plan, is when we will start dealing with the site plan.
Yeah. Right. Ms. Sullyates? What I, what I'd like you to do is want you to go ahead and present your idea, and then walk us through what you want, what we, what we want the deliverable to be tonight, so that we all go. to be tonight, so that we all go together, you know, rap.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know, I'm going to hop off. Sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, but.
If you guys are, you guys are excused, you can hang out or not.
Yeah, thank you, bye.
Thanks.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
So walk us through the idea, walk us through what's driving the idea and walk us through tonight's deliverable.
Right. So.
And before, before you do that, Ms. Green and Ms. Creasy, we don't need a vote, do we? We just need to initiate.
Initiate. Initiate. Yes, you'll need a vote on whether, a vote on whether or not to initiate. You don't need a vote to approve anything, but just to initiate or not. And just, just to make it clear, I see Mr. Revere is still hanging out with us and he's welcome, but he doesn't have to stay. Your application was voted on.
Gotcha, I'm happy to stay if it, if it is beneficial to the process, otherwise I'll, I'll do as you need me to.
The council's moving on to their next matter, so thank you.
Okay.
Unless they're putting a daycare back here and don't want parking requirements.
Thank you all, really appreciate it, have a great evening.
Okay, so lots going on right now. I've been the chat much earlier, I posted a New York Times article from three days ago talking about the issues in New York City. Starting schools again, but only partially, I think, I think here in the city, we're talking about only two days. The question then being, oh no, where do the kids go? Do people work and have kids sometimes and not others? How does that work with employers? University of Virginia has communicated that they're expecting us to work and not watching, watching children at all. All UVA employees, there are many UVA employees in the city. The childcare operators are starting to open again, but at reduced capacity. So we are not as strong as we were before. We are substantially weaker than before. And before it was, I think, a seven-month wait. It's much worse now. It's a disaster. Seen a posted in the chat, yes, we did have public comment on the car wash, no one spoke. The, it is difficult, as we have seen, it is difficult for applicants to get a, a permission to start childcare. Most places don't allow it in the city, which is, you know, very simple, therefore most people don't do it. The dimensional requirements, parking, there's too many things to say no. So people hear no and they, they go no. I am proposing that given the current emergency, we should allow childcare in the city where it's needed. I can tell you by my specific language proposal, which I shared with staff earlier, but I don't think I heard back on. Did hear back on, thank you very much, Ms. Robertson. The text I'm thinking about is, I move for a zoning text initiation to make both family day homes for up to 12 children and daycare facilities by right uses in all zoning districts and exempt them from off-street parking requirements. And I also ask staff to develop standard drop-off and pickup code to ensure safety given this change. There was some, some pushback when I discussed this online from a former planning commissioner of all people, concerned about safety. That's what I have.
All right, so again, your motion is to.
Yes, I'm.
You don't need to read the whole thing, just, you know, just, you want to set this thing up so that we can take a look at it.
Yes, yeah, this is ZTI. We're not, we're not voting on a, a final, you know, zoning change today. I just, I want staff to work on this because this is pressing now, this is an emergency.
Is there a second to that motion?
All second.
All right, any further discussion?
Question. Missy, aren't, aren't these allowed by right everywhere anyway? And it's like a home occupation permit for up to five kids?
In residential areas without going through many processes. Once you get above five children, you link into the state permitting requirement as well as different building code requirements.
So, right, right. I just want us to be careful and think about this because um, we don't want just everybody opening up a daycare. I mean, there are child predators out there that we would like to not open up a daycare and that would be not, but so.
Are, are, are we in a place to prevent child predators from opening daycares in, in the, in the NDS?
What I'm saying is, is I think we need to be careful. And, and it is allowed in all residential zoning districts for five kids. And so right now in a time of, it is, it's a by right use as a home occupation. And so right now, I, I, I understand what you're trying to do and, and I understand. All I'm saying is, is I'm not sure how many large daycares we can open while we're trying to social distance anyway. So I hope that people hearing this, a lot more people want to open up in their homes. I mean, it'd be a great idea right now. I will tell you that some of the things that we've done in the county is relaxed restrictions on some of the permit requirements for home occupations and things like this. For instance, you know, in, in the county, they opened up the seating requirements or seating options for restaurants. So there could be emergency orders or something like that that could take place, or that's what we've done. I'm not sure what's set up in the city. And then we've set up some, potentially, we, we've got something in place to potentially set up looser temporary sign restrictions. So people can do the signs for longer periods of times for businesses. So maybe we could look at something like that as a, as a more quick, easy fix to what you're trying to do. I'm not sure what the requirements are for the permits, but kind of look at what we could do as a quick, quick fix for people to be able to keep up to five kids in their home. And that would be much quicker than a zoning text amendment to change daycare centers. Does that make sense?
It makes sense as an and, it doesn't make sense to me as an or.
Yeah, can we do both?
I think it's a good idea.
I'm just saying, you're saying this as a thought, because we're going to have to have, I mean, when people can't go to work, it's either I got to keep my kid or go to work.
Yep.
We need a quick fix, not a zoning text amendment. So that's my concern with this. Zoning text amendments are not quick.
Maybe I'm not understanding, would this take years? Why, how long are we talking about?
Lisa, six, seven months?
For a zoning text amendment?
Yeah.
No. First, staff will need to go investigate. The planning commission is not under the same 100-day rule.
Okay.
As when council refers something to it, so you don't have that time period. So first, the proposal has to be vetted by staff and staff, what needs to make its own recommendations to you. And then at whatever point you might decide to go forward with a specific proposal, you would have a public hearing on it and then it can go to city council when it, when it's ready. So the, the amount of time will depend on how long it takes to fully vet a proposal. And just keeping in mind that when you do a significant zoning change with a public hearing electronically like this, it can be a little challenging to make sure the word gets out to enough people to get comments on it. But on July 20th, staff has taken some interim regulations to city council for its consideration in terms of requirements for asking people to undertake certain steps for public engagement while meetings are being done electronically. And staff could always consider complying with those steps itself in the context of this type of amendment.
Let me put it to you this way. So let me ask you clearly. If this is voted on tonight and I'm only thinking about what you're saying is the emergency need, and I totally get that. I've got two right now that I'm not sure we're going to do with, because both of us work. If we said yes tonight, what do you think the earliest date you can get this back to the planning commission?
Right now, I'm not sure, we have to look at the workload, because both and beyond, the workload consideration is very critical. And right now, a lot, some things are moving on the regular schedule and some are not, you know. And we can't guarantee the planning commission that we're going to come back like in October or whatever you for presentation in terms of text amendment. So it's going to be at least a few months before we can come back to the planning commission.
That's what I'm talking about.
It's brutal.
Workload and things, it's not going to get to us, the planning commission, I dare say September.
Yeah, it's going to hurt a lot of people.
That's what I'm telling you, and that's what I'm saying. I think, I, I totally understand what you're saying. But if we've got these locations where we can do five or more, which a social distance thing, who knows how many folks, you know, can, can happen with, with that? Is there a way, what, what kind of permitting requirements? I mean, how fast can those permits get through the system if people want to do this?
I think the point, the point Lisa is making is a, is an excellent point. You know, if you have less, five, five kids or less, you know, and you can have your daycare in any location that is conducive to the, for the kids, you know, then looking at any hurdles that may be in the way of expedited approval, warrant some consideration, you know. And if you have to go to the direction of a much larger daycare or more than five kids, then you're also looking at the state requirements, you know. And at that point, you start looking at the, the space requirements, the recreational requirement. Because once it exceeds five, those things comes into play.
And then it comes into state doing inspections?
Exactly.
So that's all I'm asking. So Alex, if I were today to come to you to say, I want to apply to have my home daycare for five kids or less, right? Five kids. What do I need to provide the NDS staff and what do I need to do to make that happen rapidly? I mean, how fast does that happen?
Uh, what?
Fill out the application for a home occupation and you turn it in and it's a small fee. And then Mr. Fabio on our zoning staff reviews and they turn that around very quickly.
So days, weeks, I mean, can you give me?
Exactly, weeks.
Weeks?
Sometimes, sometimes it might be, be days, it depends on the number of application ahead of that.
So I guess what I'd like to say, Lyle, is if this is something you want to do, so go for it. But I think we need a more immediate stopgap to say, NDS, council, are you guys willing to put an emergency order into place to say if a daycare comes in as a home occupation, that goes to the top of the pile? So.
Is that a motion?
Well, I mean, I mean, yeah, I'm just saying, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
To get council and, and Dr. Richardson on board to make sure that that is a priority project. And if that daycare comes in for something for home for five kids or less, so that that can be pushed up, then, then we, we put that to the top of aisle for first review.
Second.
An emergency order type of thing looks like and how it works.
And why not even waive the fee, small as it, small as it is, to get the attention of the newspaper and get public attention to this?
I was going to say that, I know that there's, you know, you know, yes. I'm not even sure if this is, you know, maybe this is a CIC looking at this, promoting this kind of thing for folks to do something like this in their home, especially folks who are maybe without a job right now.
Yeah, so I, I like where we're going with this, but I'm not certain what our role is in, in this. Ms. Robertson?
So, there's, there's layers of issues here. As with many other things, our ordinance is a little bit out of date. So back in 2015, the numbers of children that were considered, so under state law, up to a certain number of children is considered cared for in someone's home, exclusive of that person's own children, is considered residential occupancy by a single family. So you are required to allow it anywhere that someone cares for children in their own home. So that, that could actually be almost all of the city's zoning districts today because if you're allowed to live in a place as a single family, whether it's a single-family dwelling or a townhouse or whatever it is, you're allowed to do this with up to four children now under state law, exclusive of the children that belong to you, that live in your own home.
Right, right.
Now, when you get to five children, you are under some diff, you are subject to the state regulations. But new provisions of state law do allow locality to authorize the zoning administrator to use an administrative process to issue zoning permits for those larger facilities that have five to 12 children. But that still requires enactment of an ordinance. And so if you, if you want to go that route, it might be a little easier to authorize those homes to, to go through an administrative process to be approved. But when you do that, you're still supposed to have standards developed to guide the zoning administrator in making those decisions. So you're back to the same problem that you're discussing now, which is quite a bit of work will need to go into determining who gets approved or who doesn't from a zoning perspective.
But you're saying four kids, not five kids or less, isn't?
Yeah, in 2015, Virginia Code 15.2-2292 was amended to change, to reduce the number from five to four.
So basically what we need to do is get an emergency order through the legislation to change that so we can help.
And, well, not necessarily. I mean, so right now, one can take the position that under our ordinance, our, our current zoning ordinance, we never changed it. So you can still have up to five. But you need to be aware that when you're at five, now the state requires you to have a regulation where it, 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 it didn't use to require that until you got to six.
Right.
So we're, we're fine. So right now, under our local ordinance, anyone who wants to care for children in their home can have up to five children anywhere that residential occupancy is allowed by right within the city. It's just that someone who wants to start a care in their home at five may or may not be able to get that home approved by the state agency that, that regulates them.
So we do have a couple of restrictions though on that one to five category that look like they're not allowed by the state law. For one, in UMD, university medium density and university high density, they're not permitted at all, and MHP, which I guess the state law would override if it's one to four, but not for the fifth. And then in terms of off-street parking requirements, we require one space per non-resident employee for, plus space required for the dwelling for home, family day homes from one to five children, which for the one to four, the state law says there shouldn't be any conditions more restrictive than those imposed on residences. So that would seem that the off-street parking requirement is not allowed for those, if you consider that a condition or restriction. And then also in the off-street parking ordinance, there's no requirement for family day homes from six to 12. And then there's again. And then there's again a requirement for daycares, which are 13 plus. Um, so I guess this is, you know, the waste basket of errors.
There you go.
Well, but what, so.
If you have the ordinance that hasn't been updated comprehensively and maintained since, in accordance with state law since 2003, you've got a problem. So A, we definitely need to put this stuff in the basket of things that need to be updated, um, when we're ready to go there. But B, Roy's correct that in the event of a conflict between state law requirements and our local ordinance, we need to allow compliance with the state law up to four people.
Four, five?
Four.
So basically, we're back, back to what I was talking about. So we can do this up to four in homes right now without all the regulations.
Yes.
The fifth, our ordinance says we can do, except it's, then it's going to start about a bunch of parking requirements.
People won't do the fifth. It's not gonna happen.
Would be like, if we have, you know, permit forms or FAQs about how to get this started, to as soon as possible, switch those to be compliant with state law rather than our wrong and overwritten local ordinances. Um, and I like the idea of doing administrative things quickly, but I'd also say that maybe we shouldn't, um, we shouldn't, like, uh, we should do both, because yes, it might take three or four months. It might take till September or October to get a ZTA passed. But A, clearly we need to do it anyway. Um, and B, like, I think four months ago, it was easy to think that, oh, this pandemic is this, you know, ephemeral thing and we're all gonna stay home and then by July, we're all gonna be out of here. But, you know, at this point in July 2020, it seems really clear that this is, this is the indefinite future for us. And yes, sometime early next year, maybe we'll have a vaccine, but like, um, there's a good chance we don't also. Um, and we should plan for that contingency. And so, um, if this is critical for the pandemic, I think it's important to move forward. Um, but also I think it's important in general, because I know Lyle, at least, and my coworkers, were complaining about daycare even before all this. Um, I personally don't worry about it very much, but.
So I'm okay with the end, but I don't want staff working on this when a more quick result that we can get through for folks could use it right now. And it's great, Rory, for five or six, seven months down the road. Some people are gonna lose their jobs before four months or three months, because school should be starting in August.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I think.
Going back to work, this, this $600 additional, um, funding from the federal government for unemployment is in, at, at the end of July. People are gonna go back to work. I know UBA furloughed a lot of people to August 1st. And now we've got a bigger problem and it is August, two weeks from now. It is not October when we can get it to council or November. And so I would like staff to really look, and if, if you guys are in agreement on whatever we can do administratively quick and then step two. I think it's a two-step process.
What would you like to do with your motion? Uh, would you like to keep it as, or would you like to amend it based on the input from Ms. Green?
I would like to amend it, uh, to add the line, uh, and take all possible administrative measures, uh, to ensure, uh, childcare is provided as quickly as possible.
Or the.
Mr. Stolzenberg, would you like to second that again?
I'll second that amendment. Um, though I'd actually, if possible, approach, uh, propose a minor friendly amendment to your original motion or as part of this amendment, uh, to say, family day home, uh, which is the term in state law for one to 12, um, if we're gonna limit it to that 12, um, and not cover the 13 plus, which maybe we should consider too, um, but.
They're, they're both family day homes. It's just you don't get regulated till you're up to five.
Yeah, Ms. Creasy, are you up to date with that?
Um, so I've got, um, I've got the original motion that, uh, was provided by Mr. Soli Yates. I've got his addition of, and take all administrative measures to make childcare available. Um, I need Mr. Stolzenberg's change.
Oh, where he said daycare, just change that to day home or family day home.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
I got another addition. And, uh, this, from Jody, you know, the conversation we had, so that, you know, if possible, if, if council would prove it, we move forward with the, uh, waiving the application fee for the one to four.
Yep.
All right, are you guys ready to land this? All right, Ms. Creasy, would you poll the board?
Mr. Lindo.
Aye.
Was that an aye, Gary?
I didn't hear you.
You're up.
You're up.
This, Mr. Heaton abstains to, to a possible conflict of interest.
All right, Mr. Soli Yates.
Aye.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yep.
I have a question. But that doesn't change my vote. Um, what are the restrictions on daycares in churches where the stat, uh, mostly of the, I'm with you. Where most of the, um, infrastructure is already in place and parking and all the things?
That's why I'm abstaining, because conversations are already.
So what, what are the restrictions that we, what are the hoops that you, that churches have to jump through?
Churches have a religious exemption, even though many of them exceed the state and city requirements. But we're, we're not, we're exempt from having to, uh, adhere to them. But I know, I know, I know from, like, exceeds most of the state requirements.
So how is that possible, under our Lupa?
Um, it's, it's because they're technically religious schools, okay? There's, if they're a school as opposed to daycare.
Ms. Green, I'll, I'll look this up.
There's a difference.
A few years ago, there was a, there was a court case that came out of the city of Fredericksburg that dealt with the licensing and zoning issues relating to, um, um, daycare in churches. And there may have been some unique facts. I need to go back and review that. Um, there are some special licensing provisions or exemptions at this, certainly at the state level for churches. And then what I would need to go back and review is what the zoning issues were in that case.
Because if there's, if that's a hoop or something that we can tear down quickly in the city too, maybe that's something we need to add to this, because that's a, a good use of a church.
That isn't being used right now.
I think that's a good use of a church.
So, uh, yeah, but it, it, some churches have daycares and some have schools, okay? And schools are different than daycares, even though they serve the same population.
I would like to know that, uh, Ms. Robertson, because I, I can't, I don't, I, I thought our Lupa only, uh, exempted churches on the, uh, same exemptions for wineries and breweries.
Yeah, there's, it, I don't know if I'd use the word exemption, um, but I think what you always have to analyze is whether your regulations impose burdens on churches, um, that aren't permissible. So, um, but I do think that it, that exemption may be the correct word relative to the state regulations that deal with either licensing of a school or, uh, or daycare.
And Lisa, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, of precedent for when a, when a public school burns down or hits, gets hit by tornadoes and the churches around open up and the, you know, so it, it happens regularly across the country.
I, I understand that, but that's, and, and so maybe that's what I'm saying too, is if, you know, if there are hoops, maybe if there's a, because of that kind of emergency situation, we put, we, we put some kind of emergency order that expires.
So the other thing is the mayor or the governor can call a state of emergency and then a lot of the things we're talking about tonight will be not an issue. But that hadn't happened yet, so we're doing the right thing.
Well, there is a state of emergency.
There is a state of emergency. That's how we make some of our emergency orders at the county.
Nothing explicitly waived related to daycare, though, maybe?
No, there's not. And, and again, um, the governor would, could address that if he wanted to relative to state regulations. From the city's perspective, we have to, um, we have to look at what the impact is on our local zoning regulations and, you know, to what extent, um, something is modifiable in the short term to facilitate, uh, something happening. Um, it, that will be helpful to people who need that additional childcare.
So then, if you find that, if you could let us know, because then maybe what our next step is to reach out to Sally Hudson, because I know that the, the legislation, I think they're doing an emergency thing in August. And so maybe they need to bring this up and be a, a, some kind of mandate, an order, an executive order from the governor.
Well, and the school board doesn't have their plan nailed down yet either. But we're, I think we're all.
Kids are only going two days a week, there's three days a week. There's somebody who's, you know, working full-time has got to, you know, have childcare. And I worry about the kids that are with no internet, they don't have anybody at home, mom and dad or mom or dad have to work. I mean, it is a, it is something that has been weighing heavy on my, my heart and my mind. So.
I, I would concur, I would concur that especially the most vulnerable, uh.
Yes.
K and pre-K, uh, home may not be the best place for them and, uh, is whatever the governor can do to expedite that, so it's not, doesn't become a zoning process.
Right. So Lisa, could you get us that to see where we are with that? That way we know what to kind of go to, to request from, uh, Delegate Hudson?
Um, what the state regulations are.
Well, what our regulations would be, what roadblocks we would endure here in the city to be able to do something like this in, in institutions like churches or.
Sure.
Or this kind of thing. Does that make sense, everybody? I'm, I know I'm adding something to what we, but I feel like there's such a, a much more urgent need than a zoning text amendment.
Sounds like a second motion.
Yeah, we, 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 we've already voted. So the, your, your original, uh, motion was voted on in the past.
Yes, yeah.
So, let's wait until we get the feedback from Ms. Robertson before we, um, go down that rabbit hole.
And so I've also got a procedural question. Uh, with the ZTA that we just initiated, is it possible for staff to come back to us with the sort of like nondiscretionary or obvious or necessary things by state code? That could be changed quickly without like a full report of impact analysis, because there's not a lot to debate? And then come back later, uh, you know, in that four-month timeframe we were talking about with the items that we'd actually have to discuss and debate? Does that make sense?
I would say that other than things council could do, such as waive the fees, um, I'm comfortable, and we run into this quite a bit with our ordinance, I'm comfortable in giving an opinion that if you're allowed to do something under the state law, um, that you need to be allowed to do that regardless of what our city ordinance says. So.
Okay.
The, the main change that you all might want to consider in the longer term is whether you allow administrative approval by the zoning org administrator of five to 12. But when you do that, it's still, it's an equal amount of work, because instead of putting standards to guide that discretion in your ordinance, you have to, um, put together a set of standards that the zoning administrator has to use and make in the decision. And that would include everything such as parking that's applicable and whatever you would normally locally regulate. You have to lay that out in a policy and procedure document for the administrator to, to apply.
But, but also, there'd be hoops to jump through for whatever the state regulations are for five to 12.
Right.
That wouldn't be something we'd be able to waive or have a conversation about.
Right, right. So, but it's just, it, it's not something that I would encourage you to ask staff to do in the next two weeks or so. It's, it's more, it, it's gonna require more thought and, and work than that.
Can I ask a quick question? The vice mayor has asked how much the application fee is for the home occupation for one to four children? One to five, whatever?
Um, it was, it was a, uh, it's a hundred dollars.
Yeah. Um, and so one thing I noticed in the state ordinance here is that for that five to 12 family day home, um, regardless of the regulations for administrative approval, um, there's a, uh, requirement to give notice to neighboring property owners. Um, and they can then object, um, which.
That's correct.
Sort of gives them this opportunity to, so I, it seems to me that like you could implement fairly lenient regulations, um, because this objection mechanism is there. Um, so you could relatively quickly say, well, I mean, there aren't any parking requirements in the ordinance, so I don't see why you would require them, but whatever else would be, you know, setbacks or whatever you would say, you could make them fairly lenient, um, and then, uh, consider objections brought up by neighbors if they happen. And then if you have an application where they've spoken to the neighbors, the neighbors are happy, um, they're not gonna object. And so, you know, there's really no need for, um, all this process.
Yeah, that, that can be looked at. I, I would suggest that ordinarily, I, I wouldn't recommend having our zoning administrator in the position of resolving objections among, um, neighboring property owners, that probably what you'd want to do is have him approve the ones that nobody objects to and send anything else to, um, um, some other level of administrator. Maybe the planning commission could be the administrator, um, for ones that have objections. So it's, it's just gonna take some thought to figure out sort of all the, the, the pesky details, um, for the long-term solution, um, you know? But we can, we can get some things moving in terms of information and administrative, uh, details like the waiving the fee and the short term and that sort of thing.
Sounds good to me. Thanks.
Right.
Well done.
Is there anything else you guys would like to chat about? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I said move.
Second.
We are adjourned. Good to see you guys.